I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. I'm just gonna do a real quick go around the room because I'm seeing a couple faces I don't recognize, and I probably know you by name and from emails, but I'm Linda Mollno, Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Ellen Swanson, Trustee.
Josette Espinosa, and Jerome, Director.
Michael Throne, Director of Parks and Public Works, and your City Engineer.
Liz Hollingsworth, Trustee.
Lois Gary, Trustee.
Steve Dohmeyer, Trustee.
Amanda Fowler, Community Engagement Manager in the City Managers Office.
Robert Zbietrak, Community Services Analyst.
Irene McDermott, City Librarian.
Thank you, everybody is exactly who I thought that we were. But now we also have recording this on our tape here as to who's here, so we don't need to worry about that. Short meeting, special meeting, the big concern we had at our last Board of Trustees meeting were the capital improvements and with the city budget about to be submitted, we wanted to make sure that we had input and understood exactly what was going on. And seeing that this is not the same one we had at our last meeting, which is good, that's what we asked for, some changes, and so if we could go over this then just very quickly, the first three items have, from our last meeting, had been indicated that they were in progress in some respect. One question that I would like to raise, and then I'll open it up to our other board members, and that's with the entry canopy for the library bookshop, and this has been something that's been going back and forth for months in our discussions, and it was initially brought up by the Friends because they were getting flooded. This was, it came up last year when we had significant amounts of rain. Apparently, we were supposed to get it again this week. Hasn't quite turned out that way, which is kind of the good news, bad news. My big concern is that canopy is not gonna answer the question, not gonna solve the question that they have, and that's how to keep the water out, because it's not so much from my layperson's viewpoint, going out there and looking, the water is, yes, coming down in front of the door, but it is more importantly, running down the sidewalk, and there is, I think, an issue with the grade, and that's where our city engineer really needs to help us out. Is this something that we can indeed resolve easily with a canopy, or is it going to be much more to really solve the problem?
Well, the canopy is the Band-Aid, just to sort of bridge us through till we do a bigger project. The bigger project is really tearing up all of the sidewalk for quite a distance on both sides, and shaping it so that the water doesn't go where it goes. And so, that will more than likely need to bring in an outside consultant to design us up something so that they can set the appropriate grades on the sidewalk, and then also bring in a contractor to do it, because we have to match the concrete that's out there, and that's gonna probably be the trickiest, fussiest part of it, is matching the finish, because the finish is of a certain kind of finish, and it's already aged, and you can always tell new concrete versus old concrete, so we have to age it so that it doesn't look too weird, and then it's gonna be...
Maybe it will, maybe it won't.
Well, yeah.
I think we'd prefer weird to wet books.
Certainly, and so that is something that is well within the realm of possibilities. That, to me, of course, sounds like a capital improvement project because of just the scope of it is more than $5,000 certainly, and so it will take some design effort, and that's something that you all can make that recommendation in your process, I would think, to...
I think we tried to do that initially when we were asking for a canopy, and it just didn't get...
Didn't get captured that way.
The conversation wasn't passed along quite the way I think we intended it to be.
Can I get some clarification, because I think two things are getting lumped together here. One was the canopy for the entrance to the library, the main thing there to protect the sun from coming in and the rain.
Right, no, I'm just referring to the one over the Friends Bookshop.
You said entry canopy, library and bookshop.
Right.
So, I'm not clear if this number and this stuff is referred to both together, is... So, I just need for a little clarification on that.
Oh, that's a good question, Steve.
Yes, they are both together.
Okay.
And then you found out something about the beams there were not solid?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
So, when, I just blanked on his name.
Dean.
Dean went out to go with the contractor to check over the beams, they found out that they are hollow. So, per Public Works' request, they were gonna do a change order to be able to create a frame over the beams rather than going into the beams. How much that's gonna cost, I'm not sure.
So, we're still not on target with this $39.65, still an estimate, we still want it done by May 2020.
Yeah, it's, as I understand it from our Public Works Manager, Mr. Werner, that the contractors already fabricating what they need to for the framework in the area above the Friends, and it will cost more than this, but we're gonna use funds from another account, so that this project, this funding amount will be totally expensed out by the end of fiscal year, and it'll all be done. So, that part of the temporary protecting measure will get into place while we go and develop a larger project.
I guess what I'm looking for is a separation of these two items, because, you know, we need to get that canopy over the main library entrance before summer comes for the heat reason.
Right, and that's in progress, that one's in progress, that's part of this $3,900. The extra work we needed to do over the Friends area, because lo and behold, we discovered that, you know, architectural, not structural, the building.
Well, and even though it is a Band-Aid, it is a very nice item to have, because even if it is raining, people at least can put their umbrella down before they get inside and...
Right, and it doesn't cure the latent defect, which is, I mean, there's, the latent defect with the entrance is that it's unsheltered, and rain will come from that direction. So, there's a latent, because there's no, you know, there's no overhang, no roof there, because of the architecture. The other one has basically the same thing, is that the louvers really are just more for sun protection, sun mitigation, as it were, and so I can see why they weren't necessarily structural.
Right, they didn't need to be.
They didn't need to be, but, and that's kind of an interesting discovery to make. So, it did increase the cost, we decided internally, we were just gonna pick that up through another operational cost, another operational fund that we can access for building maintenance and take care of that, so that we can get both of them done, but we didn't wanna slow down either, at least, because we wanted to get them in before too long, because part one of this is kind of taking care of the front entrance, and that's sort of the permanent solution there, in addition to the Band-Aid over the Friends, at least to keep some weather, some of that environment out, and then look at the bigger picture of what to do with the sidewalk.
When you do the...
We keep sandbagging it, but that's not, you know, it'd become problematic, of course.
When we do the sidewalks in that area, is that gonna affect access to the library?
It will, because to place, to remove and replace the concrete, that does take, will take a certain amount of time, so we will have to be able to schedule that as to when's the best time that works with the operations in the bookstore.
The bookstore, not the library, right?
No, the library.
It won't really impact, because we'll be able to detour people around.
Right, not the library, okay.
Yeah, going into library, library has got more entrances that we can access. It's just the Friends part will have to be, the way I see it, have to be all the concrete will have to be removed in order to shape it, because clearly, it's, I'm sure it meant what the design required of it, but for some reason, that wasn't seen, and it's just interesting that for 10 years...
Some Friends, it may have to be closed for a length of time, you know?
Three, four days.
Yeah, a couple of days.
Yeah, I think initially what they were looking for was pretty and not functional with the initial design.
Yeah, you know, sometimes with architecture, it is very pretty, and then...
They miss out on that basic stuff like water.
Yeah.
I really appreciate your report, and my concern that I have is that this board has been discussing this since October of 18.
Wow.
I know that there have been a number of personnel changes in the city, but I'm really frustrated, and I'm frustrated that now we're paying for something, out of whoever's money, but it's my money if I'm a taxpayer, that isn't really the solution at all. I mean, it's not the solution to be paying for this extra thing to be fabricated. I would advocate for just keep sandbagging it and really work on the real solution, so...
Well, we need to work on the real solution, but the other part, though, Liz, is with the canopy, is that part of it is for the front door, and that we definitely do want in there ASAP.
Absolutely, so does Steve's plane, Robert, for our next meeting on the 23rd, I believe it is, could you separate that road and do the entry canopy for the library and then take out, so tell us, $39.65, how much is for the entry canopy and how much is for the cover to the bookstore?
If I may, the cover that's over the Friends area, it doesn't mitigate the problem that we're discussing, but what it does do is when people come into that area, we'll protect them when they go in, the rain won't hit them, they can, you know, put their umbrellas down, as she said, so, I mean, you can eliminate it if you want, but I'm not sure I heard you clearly.
Well...
It does serve another purpose.
I think that's...
It doesn't serve that purpose.
It doesn't serve the purpose.
But it does still serve a purpose.
It serves another purpose, but I think Liz's point is really good here, is this is something, and it's a frustration level, because initially, the Friends came and said, "How can we get rid of the water that's coming in?" They thought a canopy, we started talking canopies, but we were still trying to figure out, and from that very first meeting, I recall, the discussion of the grade on the sidewalk was really the issue, and that putting up a canopy might, you know, keep it dry if it was just a gentle little sprinkle, but if it was a downpour, it wasn't going to do a darn bit of good.
I understand.
And so, that, I mean, that's the frustration that we're seeing here, this money going to what we had thought was going to be the solution to the real problem, and that was the water in the bookstore.
So, maybe in the interest of time for tonight, maybe at our March 23 meeting, could we also review what the process would be for naming, designing, costing out the project that you're talking about, that would have to be another capital improvement project?
Yeah, certainly, I mean, that's a straightforward...
Well, the other thing, too, is could we find out if there's any way to fast-track that process on the sidewalk?
I'd kind of like to know what the process is.
Right, well, the process and is there a way to speed it up?
Perhaps some of our role, and maybe I'm just speaking for myself as a trustee, is then to go and advocate for that to be done on fast track.
The process would be that the council does meet at the end of the month, on the 27th, to discuss where they're interested in spending capital equipment monies and capital improvement monies. We're taking a list to the Public Safety Commission this coming Monday, there's probably, there may be a very small window to add this to the list before it gets published tomorrow, and if not, then it can be something that can be potentially added to what the council sees on the 27th, if there's, if that comes up.
We were told the deadline for that was already passed in January, and we were told that at our recent meeting, that's why we're meeting tonight.
Well, where we are is that the lists are gonna be made public as of Thursday afternoon, and we still have a small window before we publish it to add this, and this certainly, you know, from the realm of the engineer, this is a straightforward project, and then if it can't be added, then coming on the 27th to the council to advocate for it would be the next opportunity for it to...
I think you're being very generous with your time and your willingness to do that. Is that enough time for you to give a fairly accurate cost estimate?
Oh, yeah.
And the scope of what it's gonna be, and if the drain needs to be changed?
Oh, yeah, it's a straightforward little sidewalk project. We do a lot of straightforward little sidewalk projects. And it's really, there's going to be, I may be a little overly, I wanted to use the word generous, but I don't want to use the word conservative either, but cautious as to what I, how I cost it out, just so that, because I know that it's a high-traffic area, there's architecture involved, there's safety, you know, because of the people, there's supposed to be drainage out there, but you can't see it, and that's also another problematic issue there, and so it becomes very boutique-oriented, and then you also have to have just the right contractor to construct it, because you've gotta have a certain level of care and craft, because you've got a certain building that's got a certain aesthetic to it. So, that makes it more expensive than me going out and slapping down, you know, a mile's worth of concrete for a sidewalk. It is a little more fussy, so, but that's not necessarily an impediment, it's just, I think, as always with capital improvement projects, if there's members of the public that think that it's a good project, come up to when the council has to start weighing, you know, should we do this over here, or should we do that over there, you know, the public testimony will always...
And that's the 27th.
That's the 27th, right.
Michael, do you remember the background of last year? I know there was a lot going on with the CIP. Because I know originally, the budget was higher than it was, and obviously, council has to make decisions, and it got cut at some point, just as they were balancing, but I don't, was the project different, or was it just there was more money assigned to it at that point?
I think at the time, the council was not very confident on the overall project and said, "Keep it to this dollar man."
And they just chose 5,000, that's kind of it.
They chose, it was 39.40 or something, some odd number like that, and so, this time around, it'll be a little different, because it's not, it's, it'll just be a little bit different, because, well, this is a true construction project, instead of just building an awning or a canopy over something.
So, pardon my ignorance, but as I look at this $39.65 number, is that the estimated cost for two canopies?
That's the...
I need to do it at my house, and I wanna get in on this.
Yeah.
It's a great project.
Well, after we discovered, that was the cost, that was the cost from the vendor to install the canopies.
Two of them.
Two of them. After we discovered that we couldn't construct it over the Friends area, because there was a cost increase that we're gonna, I'm gonna absorb elsewhere in my budget, because I want the project done in squared way.
Sure.
And now, not have that as an issue, but focus on what the real permanent solution is. And it's just a bridge, I mean, I think it was known to be a bridge by the council at the time, and I think that case can be made, and you all certainly can make it, and I'm sure the council is well aware that it floods in there, and that there's likely sandbags that are in for a year. And so, I definitely think that the board shows up and testify, "This is a good project, we want you," of all the projects in civic facilities, because we have a lot of civic facilities needs, you know, this is an important one to preserve the asset.
And I'm not sure how this, how the process works here in terms of the design of it, and in terms of who designed the library initially, who has to buy off on what the design of the canopies look like, and the aesthetic, and all that, is that a decision you make, is that something?
The canopies were really straightforward thing, they were very simple, basic.
Are they both the same, the two?
I believe they are both the same.
And the same color?
Yeah.
My only concern would be that the one for the bookshop, you've got a top on there already, and I have difficulty picturing what that would look like.
I do, too.
A canopy under that thing, so...
So, let me correct that. So, over the main entryway is an actual awning.
Okay.
Simple frame, if I recall correctly, it was near $1,700, but what was originally planned over the beams was it was just fabric stretched over them.
Sure.
That was it, and so, what's now happening is a frame actually has to be built over it, but there wasn't gonna be like a traditional awning over the entry of the bookstore.
So, there's gonna be a covering on top, and the beams gonna be a rock?
Right.
Gotcha.
So, it'll really not be very apparent as to what it looks like.
Right.
And that, again, is just a stopgap until we can get this other project that's, I know, because I get the request for sandbags everywhere.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, I worked on it for many years up in Napa County, and for decades, you'd go into the city of Napa on the weekends, and in front of all the shops, there'd be sandbags, because Napa River would overflow, and it would overflow into the house every year, and then after you spent several tens of millions of dollars to channel the Napa River, it didn't flood anymore, so, I don't even, I might go to say tens of thousands. You know, it may cost 20 or 30,000 dollars to do this, just because it's a difficult thing. I have a really fabulous contractor right now that's worked for us, and, you know, I expect that he'll give me a very awesome quote, but I have to get the...
That's impossible.
I have to get an appropriation from the council, and, you know, I might be able to be creative with it.
So, the fact that they're two different things, again, speaks to my point about not calling them both canopies, because that's confusing, because when we say, to me, a canopy is different than an awning, a canopy seems to have a curve to it, but that's just maybe my mental image of it, and an awning comes out like that, but we're not talking about an awning for the bookstore at all, we're talking about a covering on top.
It's actually more of just a fabric cover frame above.
Right, which probably would look terrific.
Yeah, we can separate them.
Anything else on the canopy and sidewalk? So, we'll hear more about the sidewalk at our next meeting. The barth AV upgrade, I don't think we had any questions on that, and it looks like June is the completion date. I did have conversations when I came here to check out the new voting machines on Voting Day, from several people who came up to me that were just appalled at, because they had attended the Historical Society's talk, and the AV system was not working, so, the sooner that gets done, the better. We've gotten people complaining about it, and glad to get that done. Computers, completion to be determined. This is, and we still have, well, we have a larger number now, you have come up, now, do you have a specific number of computers?
Forty-four.
Is that, pardon?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
So, 44 computers will be replaced, and so, I'm currently in conversation with our IT company and our finance director to, fingers crossed, get this on the April 8 council agenda.
To what?
To accept the donation from the foundation and to be able to purchase the computers.
So, what happened to the city paying for these computers along with the foundation? I believe that was what was on our last list, and I believe that's what happened at the last capital improvement cycle, and that the library went forward, and we asked for computers, the public computers, I believe it was approved, and then after the capital improvement cycle was approved by the council, they realized they had double counted some computers.
You really, yes?
Yeah, I seem to remember, yeah, that was a mess.
And so, they had a mess, and what, the way it benefited the library, at least from my point of view, was there was a lot of money out there. We had asked, and the city had asked, so there were two pots of money available for these computers. So, why are we asking the foundation?
Well, the foundation has stepped forward and said that they would replace all of the public internet access computers.
So, where's the other $50,000 that the city set aside to do this project?
I don't think that was for just this library, I think it was for the entire city.
No, but it was also for the library, for both staff and the public use computers.
I don't know where that stands.
I actually, I wasn't here, but I can certainly look into that information, so if I can find out more information, I don't actually know. I've always known that the foundation is...
I think the foundation is amazing, I think the Friends are amazing, that they sell books for a quarter, and they donate so much money, and I, my personal feeling is that we go to the city and we ask, and if we're accepted, and we were, then that's great, and if we're not, then we put it on for another year, or we go out for donations.
What year was that, is for this year, right?
I need to double check.
Yeah.
Michael, they approved something for computers, it was a more general citywide replacement program.
Citywide replacement, yeah.
But it didn't clarify what they were for.
Could you come back with a report on that for the 23rd?
I think so, because you guys were working on that for the board anyways, right?
But I think, except for Irene, all of you guys came in on the project after, so it would require some...
But it's part of the overall comprehensive, what's going on with the computers, the entire city project, so it's related, and I know, shows that you and myself have like, just to understand, like, the library, not just the library, but all of our city computers, and I know they're working with IT.
Well, it makes so much sense to have the uniformity across your different offices and across the library, it just makes perfect sense.
Let us do a little research, I'm not quite sure, and I don't wanna give you bad information.
Thank you. Move on, then, to the lighting upgrades in the bathroom.
So, we had conversations with Michael Throne in regards to the bathroom lighting, and so, what has been determined is that we need to do a review and design by a consultant to figure out what needs to be done exactly, since we do have official meetings being conducted in the room, so I think there was mention of studio lighting, I don't know how far we wanna go on fancy on this.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna go there, yeah, no, yeah, I did a council, a room light, the bathroom that was also used for council meetings, and so, they wanted to go HD cameras, and then the HD cameras required studio lighting, and the studio lighting required proper color balance, and so, we spent buckets of money, and it was very painful, because the only firms that do studio lighting are entertainment studio companies, and jobs are very, these kinds of jobs are very small, and they're horrendous to get them to perform, plus, they're also the men who they design and supply. So, in this, I think if we can bring in an outside expert to say, "No, you just need to kind of do this, this, this," then we can piece a project together from that scope of work, and then just have someone construct it for us, rather than trying to do the, someone designed it for us, and then they also bill us for the installation, that would get, that would take too long and too expensive.
So, given that this is just a proposal that hasn't gone to a consultant yet, where does, where did you come up with a $10,000 figure?
That, in my sense, is about three weeks' worth of professional services, and that's about how long...
So, that's just the consultant?
That would just be the consultant, up to that, I mean, it would, we would certainly look for it to be less, I think we'd estimate five to 10, and therefore, comfort purposes, we're recommending 10,000, just in case it becomes a little bit more expensive, because if you're plugged in at five, and all the proposals you get all start at seven, now I have to go back and get another appropriation, if I have a little bit of latitude in there, I've got a little more flexibility when looking for it.
I'm a little confused on why, first of all, you would need HD cameras, because city council are attractive people, but not bad people.
That was my example, as to how far off it'd be.
This is lighting, just lighting.
So, this is, so just for lighting, you still wanna be able to have the right kind of lighting for, you know, presentation uses, or general uses, and, you know, it's lit, but it's not lighted.
It's not, it's not designed.
It's not designed.
It's just putting lights on the ceiling and designing the way it's designed, yeah.
Right, so, you know, it's very similar, you know, I'm gonna put in recessed lighting, but then you can't read a book, because you need a point source light.
Exactly.
It's sort of that kind of thing. We need someone to tell us when you stand there, "Oh, no, you need to do this, okay, that's straightforward."
So, the 10,000 is just for the consultant?
That would be the, not to exceed.
I was in the wrong business, I should have been a consultant, ah, for something, okay. But, and this is scheduled for the fiscal year 2021, so if we...
This hasn't gone to council, either.
Right, if it does, though, is the possibility of it actually being completed? Right. If, i- if it does though, is the possibility of it actually being completed in that timeframe of twenty twenty-one?
Oh, sir.
Reasonable? Okay. Uh, window tinting.
I don't have any major updates on that one.
It's proposed for twenty twenty-one and it's proposed at fifteen thousand dollars. So it has, you know, good possibilities it will be able to, if the council approves it. Actually, the council has already seen this. They saw this back in eighteen, nineteen.
When did they see it?
Saw this, uh, two years ago.
Yeah, they saw this two years ago.
Yeah. The initial project was curtain, yeah, window shades and then it became window tinted.
And so it will go to council and, um, we have it scheduled for the twenty twenty-one. So it should be able to be completed in, in that timeframe.
I think there was some conversation in our last meeting that, uh, that, uh, we kind of felt that was maybe not a library cost, but a city cost in that it would eventually save the city a lot of money.
Yeah.
Uh, on wear and tear of, of furniture, just like, you know, same thing as in your house. You know, if you have the bright sun beating in on your books and your chairs and everything, they wear out really fast. And if you have, uh, shades and tinted windows, you don't need as much air conditioning in the summer. Um, so I think in the long run it's going to be a cost-saving, um, item. It's just an initial, um, output of money.
I do think we talked about it in the context with interior painting and exterior painting and, uh, but I think because it's a single project, you don't do window tinting every year, um, I'm comfortable with it being on the list again.
Okay, then let's move on to the computer room renovation.
I know that that project, um, currently the, the room that's there, they're, they're just not using the way they used to use it. So, um, having, um, it broken up into several rooms would create, uh, more space for the children and the adults to have study rooms. And I'm looking for the project to see how much it's gonna cost us. Okay, um, and we're looking at about twenty-five thousand dol-, yeah, about twenty-five thousand dollars. And this project was mentioned that the foundation would also participate in the cost of this. And right now we have it, we put it in twenty twenty-one, um, and it hasn't gone to council yet. So we'll see what council.
And what, what exactly are you proposing to council?
Oh, we're, we're proposing that they break up the room and to, is it three rooms? Yes, three rooms. The large room be split up into three additional study areas.
Is it like the storefront paints and?
Um, I know that the public works department is going to do it in-house. Isn't that what we chatted about? Or not quite?
We could, but, um, just for efficiency purposes, um, it's easier for me to get stuff done outside.
To go outside, okay.
My resources are thinning.
So we haven't, we haven't designed it at, at this point at all.
So this is just a good guess?
Yes. We haven't designed it. We, we don't have a construction company. Um, but we understand the need and the purpose. And so we wanted to make sure that we got it into the CIP plan so the potential of getting it done would happen sooner.
And is this another one that will, where the, much of this cost is going to the consultant?
Um, I had estimated about five thousand dollars to do, uh, enough of a design to get a building permit, cause you will need to get a building permit.
Right.
And has the foundation committed a certain dollar amount to this already? Do we know?
Mm-hmm.
How could they? We don't even really have a real project.
I know that, that, I know the foundation was concerned about the room and the use of the room and that they wanted to, they, they wanted to be able to help, um, with creating more usable space, something that would be more functional and would, uh, give the public, uh, something that they could...
It, it just seems weird to me that the foundation's function was to like add additional stuff, not to necessarily deal with the construction of the existing building. That seems like a city function.
Right. Right. And I, that's, I, I, you know, I'm, I would like to know more about how, exactly how this design is and what it's going to look like too.
When does the foundation meet again?
Foundation meets, they just met. So they will meet next month. Take a look. The foundation will meet on the thirteenth of April.
We have some time to talk about that, maybe in our March twenty-third meeting about some of us. And I would be happy to participate, but to go and attend their meeting as House who had, who had attended our meeting and bring this up and talk with them, um, more about...
I think that's a really good idea.
The CIP process, the fact that we go into it with good ideas, but these are not costed out designed projects.
Right.
And really, you know, we talked with them, I'm gonna use this word again, is the taper corner up, about like, they want sexy kind of projects in that the projects that they do will propel further donations and participation.
Specific projects.
Specific, sorry, I'm sorry Liz, I didn't mean to.
Hopefully they'll be sexy too, but specific.
Yeah, specific brings in more money. Okay, so if we can, uh, get more information on that, then as much as we can for our March meeting and then definitely keep on that. Uh, the bottle watering station.
This is something that came up, I think, at one of your last meetings and, um, we've put it into the CIP. We actually already have one at, um, city hall. And so it's about five thousand dollars and it's, um, we've put it in for twenty twenty-one, so this upcoming budget year.
So this'll go to?
It'll go to council.
Okay.
How do you like it? Is it good to use?
I just use it before getting over here, so.
We have one upstairs. We don't use it.
Sanitary, especially.
It is very sanitary, cause you don't actually touch it and then it's just easier to use, I think.
Well, I like them. I just didn't know, but you guys are the users, so I wanted to see.
Oh, I use it all the time.
It fits in that stall.
Well, the ones we had out at Cal Poly did where you could put something that they could.
Oh, yeah. They're able to fit enormous water bottles, cause they have them at the gyms, they have them in large public areas.
Oh, just take my electric teak out. Um, okay, so bottle watering station. Um, the Thornton conference room display.
This one does have some alterations to it. Uh, Liz was able to give us some information and we looked into it. I spoke with IT.
She's about two years old.
And we, based on the conversations that I had with our IT, what's being discussed is a large screen right in here, middle of this bookshelf. Uh, since there's already a power, we don't have to worry about wiring, anything like that. The discussion though is we would not install a computer. Patrons would need to be, bring their laptop, similar to what would happen in the bathroom. And the connection would be a wireless HDMI. And we would just make sure that we have an adapter that we can check out. Based on that information, the estimate is now thirteen fifty, which will probably not go to CIP's correct.
Oh, no.
So?
The, depending on the TV that we're able to get, some of them already have sound in them.
But the Sonos or Google thing or?
Potentially. I know those Sonos bars run at a good couple hundred dollars. So depending on the television that we're able to identify, if the good sound quality is sufficient, we may just run with that.
And you'll have adapters for both PC and Apple?
HDMI is the same for both computers.
Okay.
And Robert, what were you saying about this really doesn't, isn't gonna be on this list?
There's a threshold for the CIPs, which is...
Uh, it's currently there, um...
It's on there now.
It's on the list now.
Right.
But it's been at like, I don't know, twenty thousand dollars or something and this is wonderful. Um, does it more properly belong on our budget?
That's a discussion that we would have to have.
With our finance.
It's, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's all a matter of what color of money you want to spend. You spend operating money, that's over here in the council likes to keep your, they're bringing up operating dollars. They actually like the operating budget to go down every year. If you spend capital dollars, then it's that one-time cost and they're more comfortable with, with that. Finance is in, is in the middle and they say, well, financially if it's over five thousand dollars and requires, lasts more than a year and takes two people to live it, it's capital. It's like the general. And if it's less, then it's, it's a, it's a, just a one-time expense you have in your operating budget. So it's really sort of, right now we're showing it in capital. Um, if no one challenges it, it will just stay there and we spend that in capital dollars and won't touch your all's operating budget. That, you know, so it's, it's, it's the same money. At the end of the day, it's still the same, it comes from y'all. It's just how it's portioned when it comes in.
Well, and what's this right? How this, much the city council feels the library is gonna get in relation to the police department and the fire department and public works and recreation and so on.
It's police, it's fire.
I know, those teasers.
It's, it's not my department out there. My, my department gets to build stuff. So I'm okay with spending, you know, six or eight million dollars.
So is there any wisdom to making that, say, five thousand dollars, five thousand and one dollars and then you come back and say, hey, we saved a lot of money?
Um, there's, there's honesty in integrity.
I think I agree with that.
This five thousand dollar display, that seems like...
That was me. That was me in another meeting.
Yeah. It's, it's like, you can say, no, it's, it's really, you know, it's, it's not just the television.
I'm just kidding. It's okay.
I...
I think that's...
When you had to, had to defend these things, you need to make sure that you're not over, you know, over selling how much it's gonna cost.
And I appreciate you giving the time to really get it with your IT people where it also goes with what else is in the building.
It was good pencil sharpening there.
He's good.
Those guys do, yeah.
Well, it helps when you're younger and you actually understand what this is.
Hey, you can know what you want. It doesn't really matter.
Oh, I know what I want. I just wanna twerk.
I wanna be able to see it. It's gotta be big.
I agree.
Okay, the bathroom lighting upgrades. What's, okay, what, how, what is?
So the first part was the design of it.
Design, okay.
This would be the construction.
Construction.
If we need to go to that extent.
Okay, so, but we need part A before we can get part B, get to part B. Okay, so that...
Your, your city engineer is very cautious when, when you're developing a project and you're trying to give enough information that has some level of credibility. And so there, there's a dangerous place where you can get to and say, oh, well, this project's gonna cost you X number of thousand dollars at construction and you haven't even designed anything yet.
Right.
And so you can get into the situation where you're in design and all of a sudden you go, whoa, that number I told the council that everyone's running around thinking it's a great number is totally wrong. And generally it's totally wrong being too low. And then you have the problem with other things. I mean, I've seen multi-million dollar necessary capital improvements get shot down because the council was promised it was going to cost a certain amount of money and by the time they got around to shrinking it down to that dollar amount, had no project.
Yeah.
So that's why in this particular case, I reserve the, the, the privilege of saying, well, you know, we gotta design it first because of whatever difficulty it might have in building it or whatever.
Are these in the description column? Are these the same descriptions you're going forward with to city council?
I don't know. Robert, I...
To an extent, uh, this is limited space, so there's more space.
They're a little short.
Yeah.
Because, um, please correct me, other trustees, if you remember this differently, but I remember that the bar lighting project was not something that was put on by our library staff, that it was something that was added to the list by city staff because the city council thought it was a good idea, cause they have their meetings in there.
That was my recollection also.
Um, and I think that's also why at our last meeting, um, when we met February twenty-fourth, we didn't, um, uh, we approved a motion on February twenty-fourth to, um, update cost estimates and go forward with CIP, two CIP requests. That's it. And then you've had more and I see how you put them for more other years and so forth. But I don't understand, I mean, if the city council wanted this on the list, are they gonna be okay with the design one year and the actual project even a year out that in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two kind of shows what your plan is, but it doesn't mean it's funded?
Oh, the, the second year, no. Um, generally the, the council is, um, does understand because I've been able to work with them for the last two years or so, I was to, you know, we need to design it first and a little bit of funding to do that. And then, once we do that, then I bring the estimate back and we talk about, okay, do you want to increase the budget for this based on a real cost estimate, instead of, uh, we're kind of sitting around guessing as to what it might be cost. Design it first, you can get it cost out. You can decide, oh, that's too much or that's, we're comfortable with that. And then you go to the council and you have them nod their heads and you tell them, okay, this is what we see as remaining expenditure is going to be for it. This is how we're going to do it. That, that I think, uh, has helped me build credibility to get some of these, you know, to get projects done because not coming in too high or too low. Uh, it's, you know, we're, we're keeping within the budget. We're, we're going to you and saying, okay, the phase one is this. And the council does have the tendency to want to do things in phases. Uh, they don't like to allocate all the money all at once for a project. They kind of, um, on some of these things where you're still trying to figure out what exactly it's going to be in the details, they're okay with a phased project because they can make that bigger financial decision later. And so, um, that's, I think to me is, is, that's less of a risk than going in and saying, oh, well, it's gonna cost X number of dollars. And you design something up and you find out that it's X plus, you know, four more Xs. And then you, now you have to explain why. Everyone has to explain why it's, was not correct to begin, to begin with. And on building construction, um, costs are much more volatile than when you're building like a road or a parking lot or a sewer or something. Costs are much more volatile.
Okay. I'm, we can, I guess, just hope that since the city council wanted this done for their meetings, that, uh, it might get done quicker.
You may have, there may be at least two votes for it all right.
Yes.
The security system?
I'm sorry, can I, one, one, one second? Just, uh, to that point, since I'm hearing, I haven't been on this board that long since I'm just hearing that the city council's in favor of that. Their needs might be different than what Irene knows the needs are for the ongoing use of the bathroom. I'm assuming that the person that we would hire to be the consultant for that would be getting all the participants involved.
Oh, yeah.
Because obviously a, a desk light at a table is gonna be needed for city council, whereas you might have something different for a speaker at the podium in there, right? So.
Speaker at the podium, all they really need is a light on the podium, period. Having, having done that many times.
Yeah.
All, that is really all you, that's all I want. I don't want the, I don't want the extraneous light.
Some of the speakers stand across the front of the room. And then sometimes it needs better lighting for the multiple tables of many groups around the room. So it is, there are so many different uses.
There's, there's a lot of different uses. Yeah. We wouldn't design the vacuum, cause that would kind of defeat the purpose of doing, making it not.
Right.
Yeah. I don't, I don't wanna have, I don't wanna build something that's a problem in the future.
Right.
Have you got enough of those on rent?
A pet, yeah.
Uh, can we move on to the security camera?
Sure. Um, the security cam, currently we're using the Nest. And, um, what the library's looking for is to upgrade that system. However, when we were reviewing this and talking with our engineer, we realized that the entire city is, is kind of looking at doing this as a, um, a citywide security enhancement project for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So I think we're gonna do a, a lot more work with this. And, um, it's gonna go to council and council will make some decisions. But in the meantime, we're gonna do further work on our end to see exactly if we can make it a spend on.
So is there, so twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, that's, still gives us a couple of years of Nest and hoping it works. It's working. We had a problem with the credit card that we were using to pay, but we cleared that up. And so we've got our... And so we've got our five days of storage.
So Irene, when we talked about the capital improvements and what the priorities were on this list for the library staff, at our meeting in February, you said it was the computer room renovation, the security camera, and the bottle watering station. That those were the three things that if we could get the city to fund, we'd feel a success.
Yes.
Has that changed? Is this presented to the city in any order of priority?
No, they're not.
Irene, what about the window tinting?
The window tinting is important to the staff on the reference desk because at times of the year, it's very, very blinding to work at the reference desk in addition to the toll that the sun takes on the computers and books. But, you know, we've lived with it for 12 years, so, you know, as long as it takes to get it. And I think it's, it's high up under the.
Well, if it's not in any order.
Right.
Right, but it's, it's pretty high up in the. So when, when you type up the list that you give to the city council, can you put it higher on the list? It's kind of like the, like, it was like in the complaint in the, in the voting booth was that if you didn't hit the next screen, you missed some of the candidates. So it, I mean, psychologically, whatever is at the top of the list seems to be more important.
The things, the way that our format is.
Alphabetical.
By department, then lowest cost to highest cost. And then as, as the, as each, each item is discussed by the council, then that's where the opportunity for folks to weigh in and say, you know, well, you know, for our use, you know, the police chief says, you know, for my purposes, this is my number, this is the number one priority. But we put them all there because the council can move things forward and backwards in time to move things from the future to now or something from now being proposed from now out into the future, depending on how they see an overall balance of how much funds they are expensing. And they also look at success. I mean, if there's 50 projects and they're all small, that may be a lot more difficult to complete than one really big one. So they, they look at that as.
On the other hand, you could make a lot more people happy.
So am I reading this correctly that the, your staff recommendation is for these 2021, one, two, three, four, five projects to go forward to the city council for the 2021? And I know the 2022, 21, '22. Am I reading that correctly and that's about $56,000? I don't think that's a lot in the scope of, I don't think this is a big ask in the scope of things in the city of what I'm seeing in the public safety ask and so forth. Linda, what are we expected to do tonight? I mean, I know that to move this forward to the city council, we have to approve something, right? So do we approve, one, two, three, four, these five projects for fiscal year 2021 as listed? And then the ones for 21, '22? Do we go forward as a board and say what are number one, two, or three? Although the staff is going to present everything, what my thought is, is that if there are one, two, or three projects that as a board we feel more strongly about than others, how do we communicate that? Do we write a letter to each as individual board members or?
Or is it a matter of showing up at council meeting and speaking to it?
I'm willing to do that with somebody else.
Could that go in our description? That like this is a live.
No, we're not going to the description at the current moment. I think that if you follow the model of the Public Safety Commission, the Public Safety Commission weighed in on capital project slash year and really more capital equipment for each of the departments that are overseen, I guess. I mean, that's not really the right word, but that are involved with the Public Safety Commission, Police Fire, Public Works. And each of those chiefs did indicate, because the commission did ask, well, what is your number one priority? And then the commission articulated through, through the staff report or what they're doing now is through their minutes is they support this order of priorities as presented or as inquired by them to the different chiefs. If the board here would like to do the similar thing, I think would be similarly appropriate to advise the council that in looking at this list, we think that this, if they had to be selected, that this order would be your preference, you know, depending on available funding. And then really just communicate that, you know, through Josette. And then that winds up in our staff report to the council at the end of the month. You know, I have one, the Public Safety Commission sees this and they make these recommendations, these advisory recommendations to the council. The library board saw the list about the library and made these supportive recommendations. Then the council will have that, so that when they get to those portions, they'll go, okay. We already know what the boards, where each of those groups stands. I encourage always the Public Safety Commission to come and make their presence known because they're advisory to the council and you guys are the experts in the different fields. If you were to do that, that also adds to the reinforcement of list, helps them make the decisions easier.
And that would be in the minutes from this meeting?
That could be in the minutes of this meeting, certainly, yeah.
And how will that be distributed to the council?
That will be included with the staff report that when the whole capital improvement plan goes to the council again, that would be included in there. So if you had minutes, the Public Safety Commission likes their minutes to be, once the minutes are ready, they like them to be sent directly to the council. So the council has them as quickly as possible. It's whichever works for, for the board here, I think would be, for as long as you make sure that Josette's involved. This is not my commission.
Josette, when you were reading to us about the window tinting from another, was that last year or two years ago?
1819 is what it said.
1819.
Yeah, so two years ago.
Time's gone by fast, I thought it was the past year.
Okay.
Yeah, 1819.
Mr. Engineer.
Yeah. I would like to mention that, if I might, Chair, I did communicate with the city manager, inquiring to her if she would be open to be recommending an increase in my sidewalk replacement budget for next year to squeeze this in. Instead of making it a standalone project, like I said, I have a contractor already that I've got a four-year contract with who's extremely unqualified in whatever process I need to, but at least increase the budget enough to accommodate this and I can roll that in the project.
For which fiscal year?
Would be.
1920?
July 1st.
Okay, for the next fiscal year.
For next fiscal year, yeah. And that contractor will get underway as early as August. If the council approves my one more mile of concrete, and this is 50 feet of concrete or whatever it is.
So we don't need to include that at all.
You might want to, in your minutes, support doing the work with, you know, in the most efficient way the city can do it. And I have the support to increase that budget recommendation.
So a motion from the board to the city manager to respectfully increase the sidewalk replacement budget for 2021 to include the sidewalk.
In front of the friends.
In front of the friends' library. So moved.
Second. Is there a second?
Oh, you just said second.
No, I'm asking for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can, can I get a motion then on the items on the 2021 capital improvement?
So you get a call for discussion.
Well, motion first.
So I move that staff, no, I don't know. Let me think. I move that staff communicates to the city council members on behalf of the board of trustees that our priorities for the capital improvement projects 2021 are window tinting, number one, computer room renovation, number two.
Is there?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
They stop at two?
The thing is weird to me, the conference room display, you know, I think it's really good. The lighting, if they want it, they can do it. So that's why. Number three, the bottling station.
amended motion. Any other discussion? Can we vote on the motion as amended, adding the number three bottling station? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then can I have a motion for the 21, '22 items? Oh, you know what, we did not talk about the program facilities management software.
Ooh, that's important. I can talk about that. It's called ActiveNet and currently the city doesn't really, we have a program now that we use in the recreation department that assists us with registration. But it's very minimal. And a program like ActiveNet would allow us to, it has the ability to rent all the rooms in the entire city, not just the recreation department. And right currently, there's some overbooking, there's some confusion, there's a lot of things that go on with that. But there's also a lot of online abilities. People can sign up online and from their phones and a lot of the programs that the library does, they had paint and sip the other day and they had a waiting list. People can sign up on that. It's a, it's a high-end, really good program and that would allow us to do a lot more. And people could come in and sign up for things here at the library. They could go to various places to do it. So, and it also exports all the financial information immediately to the finance department. So there's none of us closing out the bills and walking them over. There's none of those types of things that go on. So it's a staff time, it's very efficient. We had a track meet the other day, they could have all signed up online. There's a, there's a lot of opportunities with that. And so that's something that we're looking to put in the CIP. But I wanted you guys to at least get a chance to look at and see if that was something.
It sounds like something of the system that you have now is not working, that it.
We have a system, it's just.
Be acquired sooner than three years from now.
No, it actually.
You have it for 21, '22.
On my phone. It's a city cellphone, always doing something.
The question I had was on, on the amount of money because this is, the way this is worded, it would help the library, but it's really for the recreation department. So is this our portion of it or is?
No, there would be a portion and it, that is, we just put the whole thing in here, but the recreation department would also put a portion in. And so what we're just asking is that the recreation department and the library could both use it. However, the recreation department would also benefit greatly.
So it would be like a 60, 40 or 75, 25 split of that 48,5?
Yeah, I just don't want it going to city council looking like it's 48,000 for the library. You know, that's what concerns me.
I think on each project, it's an individual sheet if they're doing it the same way they did last year. Is that still true?
I'm not exactly sure.
Yes, and I think this would be, it would be community services department. It would be the departments.
Yeah, it's the entire.
Not specifically identified.
Not specific library, but community services.
It's community services, which could be library, which could be recreation. It could also be reserving over at Lacy Park, all the sites over there.
I guess I'm confused then why it's on our list. Is it just for information then?
Yeah, that, these are all the things that are going on the CIP.
Okay, well, but I'm seeing the security camera and, you know, and the bathroom construction and installation is specific to the library. This isn't.
But the library, it's the community services.
I know the library will, will benefit from it and will use it, but it's not just.
It's not just, it is both. And I wanted to make sure that you knew it was there.
No, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that it doesn't get somehow just labeled library when the city council gets around to it.
The way we have it written so far or currently, it does not specifically say it's just library. It says all facility rentals and all would be.
Okay.
Stoneman here, San Marino Center.
Lacy Park.
Perhaps if there was one word added to the description, both on our list and going forward, is the, the cost would be a proportional split between rec and library. Proportionate being the, the usage of it. You know, there are, I don't know, six rooms that are reserved here.
Well, it sounds like it's even more than just library and recreation. It's Lacy Park, it's the community center.
Michael, the reality is, this is a capital request.
That's community services.
Yeah. So it's really a different pot of money. It's not like it's coming out of their operating budgets, right?
Right, and the operating expenses would more than likely be in your administrative portion of community services and really not in any of the functional areas.
So it makes sense in terms of like you're saying, if council's looking at this pot and you guys have this much money, you want to make sure they're not aware, that they're not like putting all of library's money towards this. But it's not like there, there's no actual money.
I understand, but I think that, my feeling is, you know, and I've been active on the rec department, ad hoc group, and so I think this is really important and I think we need to come out of the dark ages. And some of the recommendations that citizens would like to see in the rec department, this would really address and answer those questions.
It's just the position.
I think that if the city, they made a big structural change and said, we're having a community services director. People were let go, people were hired, there were changes. So if we're having a community services department, I'm saying this to you, Amanda, but I mean it to the people over there. If we're having a community services department and someone as responsive as Josette helping us, then let's give them the tools they need as community services. And that's how I would see this purchase. And so I think it should say community services and not even just rec or library.
And it doesn't say that, it just says community services. So in other places in the capital program, we'd like to identify what site it is because I like to keep track of which sites are low maintenance and which ones are high maintenance. This is a department, community services department, so we don't actually mention of any specific location. Now, if the council asks you questions about it, then you say it's going to be used for here, here. But it's, it's an administrative cost. It's not a cost I would think that would go to each budget. Because any income would go into the general fund, so it's really not. It's just more maybe perhaps the way that the board could look at this is lend their support to having something like this.
The library would definitely support, the board would definitely support this, but I just don't want to see it listed under library.
Okay.
And phrases like the cost would be split between us.
Yeah, and our write-up doesn't mention that at all.
Good. So we're just going to have a motion that the bathroom lighting upgrades, construction installation, and the security camera system be presented to the city council. As part of the 20, well, I'm, I'm.
She's prepping.
I'm prepping you.
Prepping me.
For the motion you're about to make.
Yeah, just leave out that.
Get ready to say it. Irene, I'll say it.
I'll leave out the program facilities management.
Yeah, that needs, that's community services.
So I'm understanding that the program and the ActiveNet software we're supportive of for the community services CIP and I think we should say that. of for the community services CIP, and I think we should say that.
We can have that as a second motion. Let's do a motion first on the 2122.
So I move that the second part of the capital improvement requests to the city council go for fiscal year 2122 and include the bathroom lighting upgrade, construction and installation project, and secondly, the security camera system project integrating with a citywide camera project.
I second that.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that staff, on behalf of the trustees, let the city manager and city council know that we are very supportive of the community services ActiveNet management software, and look forward to that being purchased soon.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We've come to the end of the agenda as I see it. Does anyone have anything else they would like to add?
I just want to thank staff for your hard work on this, and, you know, I feel like some of the communication has been an issue, and I'm leaving this meeting feeling like a lot of that is resolved. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'll adjourn the meeting at 6:12. Very good.
Ryan, have we spent any money this year yet on the security places?
Yeah.